Granicus is rolling, Mark.
Are we ready to go, Mark?
Yes, ma'am, we are ready.
Great, thank you.
Recording in progress.
Today is March 2nd, 2022. The time is 5:12 PM and I'm calling to order the Ballpark City Council Virtual Special Meeting. Chief Deputy City Clerk, can I have your roll call, please?
Mayor Councilmember Abila.
So it seems that she more than likely may be running late, so we'll just keep an eye out for her attendance.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Proton Damian.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
Here, thank you for that. At this moment, I will move to open public communications. Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
No, mayor, we don't have any wishing to speak.
Great, so at this moment, I will close public communications and move on to our open session, study session, and that's a scattered site housing study presentation presented by the acting director of community development, Ron Garcia, community services supervisor, Eurico Asparza, and Lassar Development.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, city council staff. Again, this is related to our Measure H program. As you know, a couple of months last year, we've presented ADU incentive programs, inclusionary housing ordinance studies, and now this presentation will focus on overview of scattered, scattered site housing. I'll now pass the baton over to Eurico for just a short introduction before we introduce Lassar.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We are excited to present to you today the overview of the scattered site housing options for, for, for four different subgroups, and I just wanted to provide a brief, brief background into the population that we were, that we selected to research on this specific topic. So back during our community stakeholder input meetings for the homeless plan and other housing solutions, the community really wanted to focus on four areas, including seniors, domestic violence survivors, college-age students, and, and families as a focus area. So throughout this study, although we would discuss scattered site housing as an overall model, you would also have an opportunity to be presented with some very key indicators of what makes each of these subpopulations successful for this type of scattered site housing model. And as a reminder to be responsive to the needs of the broader community and council desires, scattered site housing really focuses on housing solutions for people experiencing homelessness as well as those that are low income throughout the community and not congregated in one, you know, side of our city. So we're really excited to present to you tonight what us and the members of the Lassar consulting firm have, have gathered around scattered site housing as the best practice solution. And without further ado, we have members of our Lassar team. We have Farzad, Hillary Carter, who will also be presenting, and Craig Edelman.
Thank you so much, Eurico and Ron. Great to be back with you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Wonderful to be before you again. I'm Craig Edelman. I'm a senior principal with Lassar Development Consultants and I co-lead our housing team. And I'm pleased to be joined by two of my associates, Farzad Mashoud and Hillary Carter this evening, who will be doing the bulk of the presentation. As Eurico touched on, tonight, we're here to talk about scattered site housing as a housing and homelessness strategy and how pursuing these types of developments and this model could help meet Baldwin Park's affordable housing needs and alleviate homelessness, both in the city and in the region. So, next slide, please. So, by way of context, this overview of scattered site housing is conducted in the context of implementing Baldwin Park's 2018 homelessness plan. This is the fourth in a series of Measure H implementation-related work that we are bringing before you. Previously, we reviewed accessory dwelling unit incentive programs, your city's potential to address affordable housing needs through hotel conversions, and an analysis of the potential impact of an inclusionary housing ordinance. So, as you can tell, housing is challenging and a complex issue, and so we are presenting you with a range of strategies that individually and ideally in combination can be brought to bear on, on, on the challenge. So tonight, we'll provide an initial overview of scattered site housing for, to achieve affordable housing development and its potential to impact Baldwin Park. So the city asked us to research scattered site housing for four target populations that Eurico just touched on. Again, senior citizens, families, domestic violence survivors, and community college students. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Hillary Carter to provide the bulk of the presentation. Hillary?
Thanks, Craig. Great to be with you all this evening. Eurico, if you could go to the next slide, please. So scattered site affordable housing development occurs when a single developer amasses a variety of non-contiguous properties, finances them with funding that ensures the units are income-restricted and remain affordable, and ensures those long-term operations are upheld. The units are typically under common ownership and operation with scattered units managed by a single property manager in supportive services if they are being offered, delivered to the tenants in a, in a variety of ways. Scattered site developments may be financed by a single or multiple sources of funding. It is often smaller scale and lower density than typical affordable housing development that Baldwin Park may, may have already seen, and frequently scattered sites are single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes or fourplexes. Go to the next slide, please. So this just gives you a visual of what scattered sites might look like as opposed to a single-site development. The next slide. And so this is a kind of a comparison of different issues that are seen in scattered site development versus conventional single-site development. So in an acquisition, in a single site, as you can see, the developer acquires or builds on that one site. And as I previously mentioned, in scattered site, they developer would acquire multiple disparate, usually non-contiguous smaller properties to package them together. The properties are financed with a wide variety of funding options, and that's, that applies to both single-site and scattered site developments. But when working with layered funding, because the regulations are different for scattered sites, it's really important to make sure that they are well-aligned. And I'll, I'll get to that later as to why it's applicable particularly for property management. Construction costs are predictable with a single site and with multiple sites with kind of indifferent shape and conditions, project costs can be difficult to project. And then property management in a single site lives on site 24/7 typically in a permanent supportive housing development. And with scattered site, there's no one living on site 24/7, and so a property manager would manage those properties from afar. And then typically, social services are offered to tenants on site at single sites, and then in scattered site situations, services may be offered at like a community-based location or a mutually agreed-upon location between the client and the tenant. So just looks a little different across each type of development and each unique development, quite frankly. Okay, the next slide, please. So here are the benefits to scattered site. It offers a model and a density that can offer a wide range of land use opportunities for the city. It's one of the best ways of achieving the goal of providing a wider variety of affordable housing options and access to neighborhoods than conventional single-site development. Providing more housing options across different neighborhoods has intrinsic value, particularly for families with children. And these disparate properties may offer more school options and higher opportunity neighborhoods. And then historically, it's been a means of revitalizing older housing stock in many post-industrial Midwestern and East Coast cities. It's been applied in Southern California as well. We'll give some examples of that later in the presentation. But particularly in the sort of post-recession era, it made a lot of sense in cities where the, that were experiencing a lot of blight. And smaller individual properties may offer value because the cost of acquiring and rehabbing these units may be less expensive than acquiring a large parcel to construct a new multifamily project. And then in Baldwin Park, there are smaller multifamily or even single-family properties where scattered site housing may make sense with increased zoning density laws like SB9. And ADUs and SB, SB9 offer you some tools for creating more housing. An affordable housing developer could pursue scattered site and get more units out of a single-family lot by turning that single home into two, three, or four affordable homes on that single site. So it becomes, I think, at this moment, I could do greater number of single family. Okay, the next slide, please. And then the challenges. So the development and operation of scattered site rental housing is generally considered to be one of the more difficult means of developing affordable housing because various financing sources for affordable housing have different requirements for scattered site. Financial packaging can be time-intensive and requires a skilled development team. The developers must assemble several sites, each with, you know, only perhaps one or two units. Negotiate, negotiate the acquisition, perform title searches, complete environmental reviews, and if necessary, obey any environmental hazards for relatively small developments. And so many smaller developers do not undertake scattered site affordable housing development because of the risk and relatively small reward. Most for-profit or nonprofit developers who undertake scattered site rental development do so to acquire and rehab existing buildings in a single neighborhood. Coordinating the acquisition of multiple properties with different sellers on different timelines may result in obstacles maintaining a steady pipeline of buildings and development, and the lack of scale size may make some financing sources difficult to use. Construction managers may have to work with different types of buildings with different repair needs across scattered locations. So meticulous oversight of the financing, construction, rehabilitation, and management of the properties is really important. And then lastly, there may be more neighborhood opposition to work through on multiple sites as opposed to working on a single site. And so if the site, if the city decides to pursue scattered site affordable housing development, you should consider working with a developer who's experienced in the financing, building and operating of scattered site housing. Next slide, please. And then these are just some developer best practices for scattered site. And so selecting sites that have amenities nearby that support the target population that you're trying to serve is really important. To be easier with a single seller who owns sort of a portfolio of properties for faster transactions. And then ensuring that funding sources are well-aligned, as I said before, is really important. Working to streamline the construction costs to the extent possible, and then selecting a property manager and service provider that has experience serving scattered site. PSH tenants is also really crucial. So, all right, next slide, please. And so it's really important that from the get-go, all project partners are in communication and have created a memorandum of understanding, even if all the work is being done in-house, so that roles and responsibilities are clearly defined. So when I was referencing earlier about funding sources having different requirements for tenancy, it really affects property managers, and so making sure that the selected funding sources and applicable regulations are applied between, you know, are known from the get-go between all three partners is really, you know, important and paramount for coordination. And then we'll go to the next slide, please. So as Eurico said earlier, the city asked us to research, you know, best practices for scattered site affordable housing development for four target populations, families, domestic violence survivors, seniors, and community college students. There are benefits and challenges to serving all four populations at scattered site locations, and we'll dig into that here shortly. Next slide, please. So scattered site housing research shows that it best serves families with children in scattered site housing because it allows them to live in different areas in a region and offers more school choices, sometimes in higher opportunity neighborhoods. And so smaller housing may provide more privacy and even some yard space than traditional single-site multifamily developments. And research also shows that families report a greater sense of autonomy and broader community integration in scattered site housing. On the other hand, and I, this isn't just applicable to families, but to live in off-site permanent supportive housing, families should have a higher degree of self-sufficiency because onsite services won't be regularly available. And so generally, for affordable housing, targeting families, larger unit sizes, proximity to amenities like childcare, high-quality schools, and transit are all important. Scattered site housing is no exception, and larger units and such amenity proximity should be prioritized. Next slide, please. For domestic violence survivors, many have children and like any other family benefit from scattered site housing. And then, you know, thinking about safety planning when survivors are living in different and potentially unknown locations, abusers may not be able to easily locate us. And then, but on the other side, sort of the con here is that domestic violence survivors report greater rates of emotionally supportive networks at single-site locations, and so having people around that have gone through the same experience or similar experiences has been shown to be positive. And then, you know, the location, kind of the flip of that as well, is that because there's not 24-hour onsite property management or security user were to find a survivor at a location that may present more, more danger. And so, you know, safety planning is really important, property management, and so, you know, supportive services, services should be aware of any potential safety concerns. And so, you know, just having a knowledge of where proximity to police stations and access to emergency shelters is, is important for this population. Next slide, please. For senior citizens, the location of each site should be evaluated for its proximity to amenities, including things like medical care, pharmacies, groceries, and social centers or senior centers. And so it's, it's, it's more complicated to do with multiple sites, right? Multiple standalone sites to ensure that they all have kind of access to each of those amenities. But you know, if there, if all the sites are in relatively close proximity, it can work. Scattered site housing offers the option to Asian place in a wider variety of neighborhoods, which many senior citizens are electing to do and wish to do as they, as they age. And then there is an increased sense of broader intergenerational community integration for seniors living in a more integrated community. On the other side, some folks report an increased sense of isolation. Some other folks prefer to live at age-restricted communities with peers. And then, like I said earlier, it can be difficult to align each site with the necessary amenities. And then for the last slide here, if you could go to the next one, please, Eurico. Community college students. So, I mean, community college students or college students in general, you know, it would be some kids, you know, students, I shouldn't say kids, would, would appreciate more autonomy with sort of standalone off-campus units, and then other folks might want more dormitory, dormitory-style housing with single-site development. Making sure that each site has transit access to the community college. That its serving is really important, and then there are also enrollment considerations for students' housing eligibility. Next slide, please. So for property management, scattered sites usually have higher per-unit operating costs than single-site properties due to the need for property managers to travel to sites, you know, operate them from afar. And unlike single sites where property managers usually live on site 24/7, property managers are not constantly at scattered sites. So they have to work hard to standardize setups as much as possible in scattered site housing because the distance between properties can be a challenge. And so property managers should standardize tenant screening criteria and funding source requirements to the extent possible. And then it's important to consider that a property manager may visit each scattered site property on a weekly or monthly basis, but there's no single site or a single manager on site 24 hours a day at this various sites, as we've mentioned. So some property management firms doing scattered site are starting to use smart home technologies with tools such as like keyless entry or electronic notification of maintenance issues so that, you know, they're aware of a problem on a site without having to be there in person. Okay, next slide, please. And then for supportive services, having supportive services, you know, reliable supportive services helps strengthen tenants' outcomes. Supportive services can promote housing stability for supportive housing tenants living in scattered site locations. And as with what I mentioned earlier about families needing a higher degree of self-sufficiency, generally speaking, all tenants living in scattered sites should have a higher degree of self-sufficiency because those onsite services aren't available 24/7. And teams may consider having like a lead service provider that can coordinate with other service partners, and then just considering like the budget elements for scattered site development. Service provision is really important to fund case management and tenancy support that is separate from housing operations budget. Okay, next slide, please. There are a variety of potential funding sources in California for developing scattered site housing. They include Lytech, tax exempt bonds, Home Key, other ACD programs, federal home loan banks, affordable housing programs, Section 8 vouchers, including project-based vouchers, home and CDPG funds, and then there's also community college basic needs funding. Each source may have, and probably does have different requirements. And we just wanted to highlight that project-based vouchers could be assigned to, to one or multiple scattered site developments if you did them. Next slide, please. And so this kind of gives you a visual layout of that most affordable housing funding sources will serve families, seniors, or individuals just by, by default. Some funding sources are dedicated specifically to housing domestic violence survivors, although this frequently, this population will by default be served by general funding. General funding may not specifically target domestic violence survivors, but property management could work with local DV service providers to fill units with the population. On the flip side of it, there is some affordable housing funding that is specifically earmarked for only domestic violence survivors. And then out there in their, in their own bubble, floating in space is community college students because most conventional affordable housing subsidies, for example, like low-income housing tax credits in Section 8 housing choice vouchers cannot be used for housing college students. And so funding for affordable housing for community college students is available with some state sources, including Home Key funds, tax exempt bonds, bonds that are specifically for community colleges, as well as some new and expanded state funding provided in the 2021, 2022 budget. Next slide, please. I'll hand it over to Farzad.
Thanks, Hillary, and great to be here with, with, with everybody in Baldwin Park. Really, just, just our point here is that Hillary's given a really nice overview of different considerations around scattered site affordable housing. And we just want to convey to you that other communities throughout the greater Los Angeles area and then elsewhere in Southern California have scattered site affordable housing, and they appear, they take many forms. So just at the top of this list, you have the city of Burbank and city of Pomona, elsewhere in LA County, that are two examples of cities that created their own programs. These were former, they used former redevelopment agency properties to create their own scattered site programs. Burbank's is now run by a nonprofit, but Pomona's is still run by the city. In San Diego, in the City Heights neighborhood, the CDC there operates a scattered site development that it, it brought into affordability in partnership with a conventional nonprofit affordable housing developer. So this is an example of a kind of local neighborhood-based organization working with a major nonprofit affordable housing developer. And then Jamboree Housing, which is a well-known affordable housing developer in Southern California, has their own scattered site development, we just wanted to highlight here, which is a range of properties about 100, 111 units there on the slide, all the way from Gardena to Hollywood. And there, the nonprofit developer on its own took this on. So again, you can see there's really a range in types of ways that scattered site can be done. And all, and the next slide, I'll give it over to Craig to finish us off.
Thank you, Farzad and Hillary. So let's wrap this up and talk a little bit about where we go from here. So just reiterating that what we've done to date was an assessment, an analysis, and a review of what scattered site is and its applicability within Baldwin Park. And now that ball is in your court for the city to determine whether or not this is something among the other strategies we've pursued that should be folded into Baldwin Park's approach to housing and homelessness. So there are a number of considerations to take into account. Partnerships, as Farzad just touched on, are particularly important. It's unlikely that the city would take on this development activity itself. So finding good partners to actually do the implementation would be one of the early steps, I think, worth exploring. Second is, you know, the exciting time, again, as we touched on the, in the presentation, around the intersection between accessory dwelling units and also SB9 and its impact on single-family zoning, expanding opportunities for small-scale scattered site development beyond single unit or single-family homes. Also looking at the availability within the city of potential sites and starting to assess kind of the scale and the potential priorities of sites within the city. And then lastly, working collaboratively with others in the immediate subregion and in particular the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments on their public land analysis, which is happening across the valley right now, and finding potential intersectionality and opportunities there to, to, to realize this strategy and some efficiencies through some of the other efforts that are going on in implementing. So I think, is that our last slide, Farzad? Yeah, so I think we'll close it out. I'll hand it back, Ron, Andrew, Eurico, I don't know if you, you have any closing comments, but certainly hand it back to, to the mayor. I'll hand it back, Ron, Andrew, Eureka. I don't know if you you have any closing comments, but certainly hand it back to to the mayor and council.
Yes, thank you, Craig. One one thing I just wanted to point out, as you recall. The council, we did a study session on SB nine and just wanted to note that on the SB nine, the reason why. SB nine was noted is that there's an exemption there once in the in the state law that allows for affordable housing nonprofits to take advantage and not. Have to comply with the ownership requirement to do to process an SB nine application. So I just wanted to make that note.
And lastly, for just our set of strategies and to complete our portfolio, this strategy does. Afford us with that continuum of care. A lot of our families or soon-to-be families and individuals end up being stuck in a. Due to the lack of 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 that movement to towards more permanent supportive housing. So this this scatter site model would allow for that continuation of. Getting people not only stabilized during emergency protocols such as our tiny home villages, but also. Beyond that into more permanent placement and supportive placement. So. We're excited to offer these opportunities for your consideration and we look forward to your questions and feedback.
Great, thank you. So thank you all for being here today. You know, I know it's taken a long time. I know that you have worked on a lot of. Potential policies, including. Inclusionary housing, which, you know, we're looking forward to. You know, I think there's a bigger discussion to have and I think, you know, I've been kind of talking to Ron about it. You know, I want to bring it up till the next meeting, but one of the issues I think in the city is that we're just not zoned for any of these types of. Any type of housing, right? And so. I think that's, I mean, that's something that's a little bit longer down the road, but, you know, one of my concerns is that. Our our land is very limited, right? And so when we look at land. You know, we have a choice, right? And how we're going to use it, whether we're going to allow. You know, whether the city's going to jump in and and say, hey, our city needs this based on demographics, we're going to push for affordable housing or. You know, we've been doing a lot with Habitat for Humanity. It's kind of a difficult one. I personally, I don't think I'm ready to give any sort of direction. I probably want to learn more about scattered site housing. And I think that might just be because I'm pretty excited about what we've been able to do here and. And, you know, and it's kind of become the norm where, well, not the norm, right? But. You know, two times in a row, it's been where we can find land, build something quick, you know, from the day the shovel hits the ground to the day we can welcome people. And it was four months at Esplanza Villa. You know, as I'm sure you guys are aware, we're working on our second site where we'll be housing homeless families with children, which is, I think, another big need. You know, and and we know that that's some of the harder things to accommodate, especially for shelters, right? Making sure that they they have a space for the family or et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to see what our other options are and how, you know, the limited land in Ballin Park kind of comes into play. And that's something that I take into mind and consideration a lot. But I do think that there's. You know, I definitely want to learn more, you know, I know you guys mentioned the domestic violence. And I think that that's something that's, you know, that's something that's another type of shelter that we should be working on. I know that that's one of the biggest issues our PD is. Fond of supporting and and or or community resource officers is very involved in that. So I think that would be. Tremendous, right? If we can if we can continue expanding the type of services that we can provide. Because as we know, you know, one person may qualify for one shelter, but they might not qualify for every other one. So if there's limited space, it kind of doesn't work. So personally, I'd want to learn more about scattered housing and how it. You know, and and how it comes to, you know, what what comes into play when we consider a city like Ballin Park, where we feel like we're built out. And sometimes there's land available, but it's just not zoned for it. What alternatives do we have in all of this? If any other council members or staff have any questions, I'll pass it on to you.
Yep, I'm sorry, before you start, Enrique. No, thank you very much, Enrique and team. This is something I'm certainly interested in learning more of. You know, the the one piece you talked about is the city's role. You know, perhaps at a later time, or if you can provide a memo to us, what does that mean? Because I I don't know what that means, honestly, when you say the city's role, because. One of my concerns is just removing housing stock. From, you know, folks that want to buy a house in Ballin Park and want to continue to buy a house in Ballin Park. So if we're, you know, if we're removing. Properties, you know, off the market for affordable housing, we're not buying and we're not building any new. You know, market rate affordable, you know, new market rate homes for the for the young professionals that want to stay here. So there's a balance, right? I mean, obviously, we need a, you know, we need a lot more affordable housing in our city, which is great. We've been doing a lot of work for that. But I'm also hearing from our constituents, young professionals, you know, people that have their children. That live in Ballin Park, that they want to buy a house here in Ballin Park, but they're being priced out. And, you know, removing this type of stock is a concern of mine, but I'm sure there's a balance and, you know, I'd love to learn more about that. As to, you know, how can the city, you know, build that around, you know, for some of those folks, but also for the folks. You know, that we would do the the rental properties for. You know, I I'm really interested in learning more about if you can provide us, you know, how San Diego kind of accomplished that. Because the first two you've mentioned, you know, they already have the properties under their CRAs. Here, we don't own anything necessarily per se. So how would that look like? What is the framework? What does that type of relationship work with? You know, are we giving, you know, are we just modifying, you know, the ordinances, the land use? Land use to allow these type of new facilities to be built in areas that, you know, maybe on the on the cusp of of our current planning as laws. So those are just some of the items, you know, I'd like to learn more about, but I think it's, you know. All these strategies need to be figured out, but I think this is a good step. So I'm looking forward to learning more from Enrique and the rest of the team that's presented here. Thank you.
Great. Is there any other questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor, just a simple question to the team, any one of the the five folks, but. Is it inherent in the definition of scattered housing? That it be rental property or is there also an ambition there for it to lead to ownership of any other scattered properties? Is it inherently for rental?
So I'll I'll jump in, Ron, if that, or you're recap, that makes sense. No, not not inherent to be rental. I think our our presentation focused on. Rental housing primarily because our work, especially under Measure H, is generally connected with alleviating homelessness. And so that connection is more direct and the target populations. More likely fall under a rental housing rubric, but many of the components that that Hillary in particular covered in the presentation about. The real estate and development factors that go into this as a strategy. Are entirely applicable to homeownership product and potentially affordable homeownership or moderate income homeownership product as well.
Thank you.
And if there is, we we could also draft that information in a memo format. There's a recent development here in Pasadena that. Looked at that and partnered with Habitat for Humanity for that type of affordable pathway to homeownership, but for the. Within the context of of Measure H, that that is. Home rentability and prevention of homelessness was targeted for this, but. Thank you, Enrique, for bringing that up and we can sure add that. Opportunities for for those specific groups that are of interest as well to the council.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I I do recall that a few months ago, we submitted a letter of interest along with South Almani and Almani. And it was for funding for. A type, I guess, of a scattered home. Type of model. And I'm curious to know what the status of of that is, because it sounds like. You know, that wasn't really touched on here, but I it sounded like it was creating ADU type of housing. And making it available to. You know, like families or who, whatever population we decide. Here in the city, but it was funding that would be, I guess, directed to private property owners who can then create that housing. So it sounded like it would fall under the scattered housing model. And I don't think that it was mentioned here, so. Just curious to know what is the status? And is that something that could be folded in as a as another possible approach to scattered housing?
Enrique, you would know the the most recent status of that, but yes, Councilmember Garcia, we did submit with the cohort, the three cities. With the council's support, expressed an interest in applying, and I think that's come back around now for the formal application, Enrique, correct?
That is correct. So there's two elements within that application process. Well, we, what you saw before you, Councilmember Garcia, was the. Pilot program application under the SGB COG as a pilot program model. We did meet with them, all all three cities, Almani, Seltan, Montane, and Baldwin Park, and they had a series of follow-up questions. Primarily around these applications' ability to. Identify pre-identify sites that would be eligible for this type of of scattered site housing models with ADUs. So known as the Back Home Initiative across LA County. There are a potential at the at the state level. That there's interest to fund this type of pilot program model, but we would require some more research in terms of what the city's commitment is. One of the strongest or or one of the the most notable. Things to look at in this application process is the twenty-year commitment from property owners. So I think that that is one of the things that we would have to go back to. What we were strategizing among staff is to identify what the community interest is in terms of that. Because once the funding is received in our traditional funding opportunities, we we. We go into projects knowing that the funding will be expended. In this case, because it is such an innovative process and there's no formal, I think we would actually be pioneers of this type of model. For Home Key two point O to fund this type of process. So and I know Farzad and. Our colleagues from LASAR have been involved in this type of discussion as well as getting us additional tools to be able to. Put something and and recommend something back to council, but. It it seems that there's two different discussions, one at the SGB COG level, which is the pilot program. Application that came before you, Councilmember Garcia, and then there's a bigger, broader and even more funding opportunities, but quite. The lots of more complexities that we are currently studying and we do have it agendized for our upcoming. Task force meeting with Enrique and the rest of our team coming this fifteenth of March. But Farzad and and Craig, would you guys like to add anything else that perhaps might be with your discussions with? The state funders?
Well, I'll just quickly say, I think you covered it pretty well, Enrique. I think that's the 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 Back Home Initiative is a really interesting and innovative approach. To ADUs at scale. And specifically connected to addressing homelessness and very low-income households. So we've been excited to 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 work on that and councilperson Garcia. Very astute observation that there are definitely some overlaps between scattered site strategies. And that ADU strategy in particular, because it's multiple ADUs as a group, which again is very similar to scattered site, but. But also some key differences that you touched on. Chief among them probably being the ownership model, right? That these are private owners. For for ADUs and the the strategy we presented you tonight is more of a conventional, a single ownership under. The the ownership control management of an entity that likely specializes in affordable housing. So. Definitely some strategic overlaps, some significant differences, as Enrique just touched on, in funding, but also in kind of the real estate structure as well.
Well, good. Yeah, thank you for that information. And so maybe when we bring this item back to take a closer look than. The. The model that you just mentioned with the COG. And where there's possible state funding. Can be incorporated into the conversation. Because perhaps, you know, that would make sense for us. Especially since that's moving along possibly and funding may become available. And so it'll help us kind of get in front of what that would look like. Should, you know, should it develop further?
Absolutely, and we 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 look forward to being part of that. Informative curve, because I think that there's still things developing in Home Key two point O and 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 in terms of timeframe, so. We look to bring in bring in that information back. And there's. Of course, there's also additional tools that have been been made available through the SGB COG that could potentially help us further. Analyze this type of model, whether we're in interested in the Back Home Initiative, the Affordable Housing Incubator Project, there's there's. Tools and technical assistance that will be provided to staff and members of our team. To bring those additional, you know, resources to the team. So we look forward to having, you know, those further discussions to to better. Align what the both in timeframes and in terms of expectation from the state.
Okay, that's good, Enrique. Because, you know, we know, we know that these things do do take time. If I look at the tiny homes village, for example, when the city council first issued a letter of interest. To the COG for that project, I want to say that was probably what, two thousand nineteen, maybe early part of twenty twenty? And, you know, it just takes time to really develop a model that. That makes sense, that works for a specific community, and I I guess that would be no different. Here, but it seems to be in the works already. So it's worth just kind of including it into the conversation. So thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. And then, so Enrique, real quick, I know you brought up the incubators, the regional housing trust. I know that they just had a meeting about about it yesterday. I wasn't able to make it. Right, I'm assuming that you were and maybe potentially Carol. So are you guys, I know that the. Application deadline is on the fourteenth, so are you guys planning on submitting anything?
We do have a follow-up appointment, a meeting with with Ron and Carol myself, but there are four target areas that they're looking to. To to help us with technical assistance and those are financial analysis and technical support. Land use and environmental analysis, if we have any sites, real estate development and acquisition. As well as public outreach and engagement, which we know that that was probably a very key component of our of our process. And lastly, grant writing and grant administration. So I know Ron and I had a meeting with the COG earlier this month and they did ask for our specific feedback in terms of like what. The request for proposals should include noting that, you know, we were. Somewhat leading these efforts in terms of what what. Additional tools we need in our toolbox to be able to close the gap on somebody. So we're looking forward to. Circling back with you all and of course, targeting this at the staff level with. Carol and Ron to see what if there are any projects that could be potentially linked to this pipeline. And there is a priority date of of mayor. They do want the projects that are ready to go by Monday, March fourteenth for potential consideration and those would be very highly. Prioritized projects. So if we do have some in the works, we would make certain that those make it to the list.
Great. So and then so you do plan on submitting something to them by the fourteenth?
I think that the one that we can definitely look into is the Carvey site, the how the family housing project, and then we would check with. Carol and Ron to see if there's other regional housing trust efforts that could be also linked to this housing incubator.
Okay, just wanted to double check, because I know it's right before the next council meeting, so. We don't have time to come back to council.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, you know, we're taking advantage of every opportunity we can. Well, thank you all. I mean, I did want to say, you know, if it's possible to meet with the LASAR team later on, I think I'd. I'd love that if that's possible, then we can I can understand a little bit more and we can talk more in detail about. Scattered Heights site housing and what the city's doing and kind of get a lot of detailed questions out there. So thank you all for the presentation. Thank you, staff, Enrique. I know you work diligently, so. Thank you for that. And then, of course, Manny and the rest of the team and the LASAR team. So thank you for being here today. Seeing that there's no more questions or concerns regarding this topic, I believe we will now recess to closed session and we will see. Seeing that there is no more questions or concerns regarding this topic, I believe we will now reach us to close session and we will see everybody at the regular meeting.
Thank you.